Who are beyond being helped by medications alone. And neuromodulation with, I would say, interventional psychiatry started at Parkland. But over the years, we lost the ability to care for those patients and offer interventional psychiatry in the form of electroconvulsive therapy. And we have been working on trying to make that a reality. However, in the process of trying to offer that access to Parkland patients, we had a patient who was admitted to our hospital with severe catatonia to the point that their failure to thrive necessitated them being intubated in ICU. We have, for the past few years, transferred those patients to CUH for electroconvulsive therapy and neuromodulation on that campus. But this patient was not a candidate. And so we had to mobilize a large-scale collaborative effort that started with our medical staff, professional services in upgrading the delineation of privileges for psychiatry pharmacy to get us the appropriate medications, our nursing team, gaining new nursing skills to take care of patients post-ECT treatment, using our necessity to ask for additional resources for equipment. And so we just had a multidisciplinary effort to make sure that we could bring our expertise and care to this patient who needed neuromodulation in the form of ECT. It was a massive effort. It is still ongoing. This patient has still not received their therapy, but it certainly set us on a path to recreate the level of interventional psychiatry for our patients who are served at Parkland. And it has been a pleasure to be a part of that collaborative exercise and really showed that we have a lot of resilience in our medical staff as well as our nursing partners and medical staff professional services team to make this a reality for Parkland patients.
Yeah, I mean, what a great message of collaboration, what we can do when we just decide the barriers don't matter. We're going to make it happen because it's the right thing to do for the patient. I mean, again, great story. I mean, we should all strive to make those things happen for our patients and figure out how to get to yes, right? Instead of always just thinking about the no. So thanks for the story. That's great. We'll talk a little bit more actually about ECT here later on in the presentation. As always, we'll start with talking about Parkland's mission to advance wellness, reduce suffering, and develop and educate. Obviously, a lot of us grew up here and so really excited about that, that entire mission, including that last part. We do have one new leader to introduce to everybody. Next slide. Yeah, so here we are. Dr. Dale Butler. He has been chosen after a significant process of interview to be medical director for emergency general surgery or EGGS. He is currently assistant professor, specializes in chest wall injury, but also has a long history of leadership already in the military. And as an informal leader here on our staff already. So congratulations to Dr. Butler. And again, he was chosen in a collaborative effort between Parkland and UTSW for all of the both academic abilities, leadership abilities, and also obviously his clinical abilities. So congratulations to Dr. Butler. Look forward to many great things from him and EGGS. Next. All right. So our quality and safety message or section will be given by our chief quality officer, Dr. Lane.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to touch on a couple of points around some of our high reliability journey. First, I'll give an update on the overall progress of the initiative and then really focus at the end on one individual skill. We continue to work with Preskeny, our high reliability partners, on training. Charlie Carlton, our lead partner from Preskeny is here regularly doing visits, doing onsite coaching, consulting, popping into areas and listening to rounds and providing some guidance on how we are incorporating HRO and the skills into our daily work. If any of you would like to have them come to your areas, visit, please reach out to me or us in the QSO and we'll be happy to arrange that. We are continuing to offer leader skills training. Some of you took that a little bit, almost a year ago now. When we kicked that off in June of last year, we've consolidated that session now down to four hours instead of the two four-hour sessions. And we're offering that for any new leaders to the organization or those that want to get a little bit more guidance on high reliability skills. Next slide. We have kicked off our universal skills training. This is an online module that we've created and we've pushed it out to all of our staff except for our employee physicians. Our goal is for this online training module is similar to our ICARE's target of having at least 80% of our workforce completed. We're certainly hoping that we get a lot more folks. We've got some really good feedback on the module. We will be pushing it out to physicians later in the summer and fall. We know that our physician community is a very heterogeneous community, very diverse, and we know that particularly our learners would be graduating and leaving us very soon. And we didn't want to push out training to a group of our physician population and have them leave right after completing it. So we've decided to just push that off for just a couple of months and complete it in the fall. All APPs should have received this in their pathways online portfolio. If you haven't received it, please reach out to us at the QSO and we will rectify that. Next slide. We are continuing our brown bag series. This is an online webex and also operated in person. Where Charlie Carlton will come in again once a month, give us a little bit more in-depth look at some of the skills. Charlie is scheduled, this session will be online. I believe he'll be here talking about just an overall update on all of these universal skills that we are trying to incorporate into our way of operating here at Parkland. These universal skills focus on some of the really foundational skills that all of us will need to be more highly reliable around our work. Includes things about, yeah, how do we communicate clearly to avoid errors? How do we do it concisely? Stopping the line and using tools like CAS, I'm concerned. I feel uncomfortable where this is a safety concern to be able to, again, share when we have significant safety issues. Next slide. I wanted to do just a little bit of a deeper dive to give some people a little bit more of a flavor of some of the tools that we've been trying to incorporate across the organization. First one is huddles or daily safety check-ins. Huddles are gatherings of teams led by a leader at the beginning of the day or shift to allow us to create awareness of what's going on in the unit to give direction and prioritize the work of the day. They should be brief. They should be focused. Really focusing on some of the significant safety quality or service concerns that happened in the past and also anticipating things coming up in the future. Next slide. This is an example of some of the kinds of things that huddles should be looking at or following. We should have a, you know, with each individual reporting out a look back, which is a real-time harm intelligence assessment. Really what happened over the last 24 hours or in the last shift in that area that other people need to know about. It should also be a look ahead, right? Trying to forecast potential problems or issues that might create harm. It could be new, infrequent or complex procedures that you're doing that day. Some technology issues, be it a computer or some other device that's not working correctly. An unusual patient or a situation, things that require work around, environmental issues or social problems. I really like to think about it as anything new or different in your environment that sort of makes you feel a little bit uncomfortable, that might increase the risk of harm. That's something to look ahead in terms of raise awareness among team members. Next slide. One of the things that some of you who've participated in huddles may have heard is us using this phrase, "start the clock." This is an idea that there are certain issues that are urgent, right? They need us to be able to identify a timeline for resolution or follow-up. When we use that phrase, "start the clock," what we're trying to do is to establish that this is one of those critical issues. We want to identify what's the priority for resolution or, you know, declare when do we want an update on the problem. When we start the clock on an issue, we want to assign an owner, right? Somebody who's going to be either responsible for fixing or addressing the problem or providing an update. That owner at the very next huddle or the very first opportunity or by the time prescribed during that huddle should provide an action plan on what we are doing to address that issue. We always want to track our start-the-clock items and provide updates at our subsequent huddles until the issue or item is closed. On the right-hand side, and on my screen, it's not very clear, but it's an example of some of the tools that are available to help facilitate huddles. You see at the top, there are some basic operational statistics. This works perhaps for some inpatient areas where you may identify the days since your last fall, your last serious safety event, hospital-acquired infection, or other key critical operational issues. On the bottom portion, there's prompts for some of those key issues that you want to make sure you're covering. Again, all of our huddles should start off with a safety story, just as we did with our meeting today. But it gives an idea of some of the things that you can follow and track through huddles. On the bottom left of the slide, you'll see that we've got a QR code if you are interested in finding out a little bit more about any of these tools or finding forums like this. You can use that QR code to go to our HRO website on the Intranet or reach out to us in the QSO and we'll be happy to share any of those documents. Happy to answer any questions about HRO.
Well, thanks, Mike. If we have questions, folks, please put it in the text box. Kim Epperson will be monitoring that, so we will be able to follow it there. And we'll definitely try to answer either within the text box or we'll try to answer it live at the end. Okay, so moving on. So as you guys have hopefully gotten used to, but now you've seen or heard about a metric from me every town hall that we've so far. We've had a couple of quality metrics that we talked about, talking about length of stay. Today I want to just talk a little bit about transplant. So as a lot of you know, hopefully all of you, but certainly a lot of you probably know that we have a kidney transplant program here. That's our only transplant. We don't do other organs. We only do kidneys. But you may or may not be aware, the last decade or so, we've really seen a very fast drop-off of the number of transplants that we've been able to do. And for a lot of reasons, we won't necessarily need to get into all of those. However, what I wanted to show was this trend graph of what has been and what is coming and what is going on right now. You'll see that as of a couple of years ago, we really started shooting up and that last number of 2023 obviously is projected because we are not the end of 2023. But you'll see that over the last couple of years, this has really, really gone up. And why is that? Well, you can tell that it's been decreasing for well over a decade. What has changed? Really, the conditions haven't changed, right? Our patients haven't changed. It's not like our patients are somehow now magically more appropriate for transplant than they were five years ago. That has changed. You guys will probably all are can attest to the fact that if anything, our patient population is getting sicker. And that's not a surprise. We see that in the hospital all the time. Our, you know, complexity index goes up every year. So this is something that we're not surprised about. That if anything, our patients are getting sicker. But we're becoming more and more successful at doing transplants. Why? Well, the reason I want to bring this up is that it really has taken a couple of leaders who have said, "We're not taking no for an answer anymore. We're going to do it. We're not going to make excuses. We're not going to accept excuses. We're going to make this happen." They didn't just say that overnight and it happened. There's a lot of collaboration with nursing, operations, making things happen sooner, faster, and more accurately. All of those things. But really what it took was some dedicated folks that just said, "We're not going to say no. We're going to look for answers of how to get to yes." Then look what this has done for our vulnerable population, right? For the population that can't afford to go anywhere else and get this done. We have gone from 10 transplants of kidneys a year to hopefully this year, well over 40. That's tremendous. That is tremendous. That is lives being changed. So again, a shout-out to collaboration and just wanting, believing that we can do it. If we go to the next slide, you'll see this is just a snapshot, some of our quality. What you see here is graph failure and donor survival. And this is a observed minus expected metric. So what that means is the number of observed complications or graph failures that we would expect minus what we see minus what we expect to see out of the population that we're now transplanting, the volume that we transplant. You'll see that a fear was before was put in front of us that we can't do risky quote-unquote "transplants" because we're going to have failures. We're going to have failures because our patient population is sicker. But if you will see, we actually, by doing more, have actually taken our O minus E, not O over E, like Visient does a lot of theirs, but this is O minus E. You'll see that we have negative numbers. We're on the good side of that. So the fact that we have done more has actually improved our quality. Again, tremendous, tremendous work by the folks in this area. So not only have we done more, we reliably have proven that we can do it just as good, if not better. So in fact, the opposite of what we feared has actually occurred. So again, I just want to emphasize this again. If we need to look for ways to get to yes, especially for our population of patients that don't have options elsewhere. So that's my metric for the day. I hope everyone is really proud to be part of an organization that's been able to do this in a very short time for a very complicated set of patients. All right, so next. We're just going to talk about a couple of other initiatives that we really tried to get to yes to instead of finding reasons not to. So Roberto and I have been sort of, again, in sort of a methodical way, tried to work through a lot of services, meet a lot of different folks, go to a lot of different floors of the hospital, see a lot of different clinics. You'll see the list here. I'm clearly not going to read it to you. But again, if you're on this list and you've seen us, if you're not on this list, we are looking to get to you. So again, reach out if you feel like, hey, that'd be great to either have Roberto or Joe come and take a look at what we do so we can show how good we're doing it and/or tell them what we need to do it better. We're open to all those things. Would love to come see you. So let us know. Next up on the slate here, real soon is we're going to be splitting up. One of us is going to go look at dermatology in the clinic and one of us in patients. So anyway, so that's something that is coming. And again, I put a plug for all those who have not shown up on this list yet. We would love to come see you. Okay, Kim, sorry. Next slide. Okay, so we just heard about this a little bit from Dr. Griffin in our safety message. And I'm just reiterating again. I mean, ECT is something that we have not been able to offer. This is something that is still an important treatment modality for those with severe, severe mental health issues. I won't pretend to know all of the indications, but I certainly know that this is something that is a very valuable tool. And we are looking to bring that here. We're still actively working toward making this a reality, making it a regular reality. But you'll see that multiple leaders are engaged and from multiple, multiple disciplines. You can see. Sorry. You can see there what the goals are, what the plan is over the next couple of years. And again, if you intersect with this, please give us a hand and give us ideas as we're developing. Next slide, please. So next thing we've been working on is a real orthopedic sports medicine programs is something that Dr. Starr is on. But certainly Adam Starr has been talking about for a very, very long time. Dr. Bose is leading this up for us. You can see over on the right, some of the pieces of this that have already been put together and some of the collaborations and that we've been trying to work on and make a reality. And of course, this is again really important, right? Because a lot of our athletes that play sports in those areas of our county, you guys all know about, don't have the same access to good injury prevention, number one, but also injury treatment when it does occur. They're lost in the system. And as you know, athletics plays a big role on a lot of folks' lives. And so it's really, really great that we're starting to be able to offer treatments and preventative treatments for this population. So we want to thank Dr. Bose for leading that up. And that's something that, again, we're looking forward to continue to develop. Next. All right, prosthetics program. I hope you've heard Roberto talk about it. Something that he's been, it's like been his, you know, baby for a very long time, his dream to build. And basically, this is free prosthetics for those who have lost limbs for one reason or another. This is a program where we can offer prosthetic limbs to folks who can't otherwise afford or buy. So we've had six so far. Took a long time to develop. But over the last few months, we've been able to do this for six people. It's just like transplant. This is like life-altering for these folks, you know? And so it's again, something that we're very, very proud of. We're so thankful for everyone who worked on this to make it a reality. And we're going to continue to try to serve more and more folks with this prosthetic program. Next. Okay, so our ICARE pause this week is going to be about accountability. We have a video here. As you guys who have been on here before know that first time didn't go so well. Second time went a little bit better with this video. So hopefully this time, this video will play really well. So Kim, hit it. Everybody, cross your fingers.
Hi, I'm Dr. Sue Henrias, Chief Anesthesia Resident. Accountability means that you take actions and responsibility of everything you're doing on a day-to-day basis, owning up to any mistakes if you make any, and being transparent with your patients. I just try my best to make them feel comfortable. I walk them through the procedure step-by-step, everything I'm going to be doing step-by-step. And I just let them know that I will be taking care of them as if they were my own family member. The best way I can think about it is I tell people to think, pretend this were your grandma or someone you really care about, your mom. How would you want a physician to take care of them? You know, how gentle would you be with them? How transparent would you be for them? And just take good care of them because at the end of the day, it is a patient and we're all working together to take good care of them. I see accountability practice in my job on day-to-day basis because we talk to our patients in the recovery units. So after you go under, you recover from anesthesia, and we usually talk to the patients and let them know how everything went. And then if things did go wrong, we are very transparent and are accountable for that action. We let them know, hey, X, Y, Z happened. And we let them know kind of the next moving steps forward. A way I ensure that my colleagues are accountable for their actions is just to ensure that they have a conversation with their patients, whether it be after surgery, before surgery, just make sure that they themselves are the one communicating with their patients. I've been on the other side, so I think it's important to know when you've been on the other side, how it feels. And you want someone to be accountable on that side as well. It is very easy and natural to feel scared to make a mistake, especially as a resident. However, it is important to make those mistakes and then learn how to own up to them and face your patients that you did make a mistake because it's natural, we are all humans, but it's all about being accountable for your actions.
So can you get the rest of the slides up while she's trying to get the rest of the slides back up? What an amazing message, I think, about accountability. Anyone who's been, what, lucky or unlucky enough to be on the other side as a patient? I have been. I've gone under anesthesia a couple of times now as an adult. It's scary, right? I mean, it's just one of those things like you're completely out of control of your life, right? And to come back out of anesthesia and have someone like that care enough about me to tell me when things maybe didn't go exactly right and what's going to happen and what we need to do and own up to that. I think it's really important. It gives you a sense of safety and security that no one's going to try to do anything to you and then not tell you, you know? Those vulnerable times, I think, is really important. So I really loved that message. So thanks to our anesthesia chief resident for sharing that with us. Okay, so next slide that we saw for just a second there. Wanted just to show everybody that our Physician Lounge, obviously, well, let everyone, remind everybody that our Physician Lounge is there on the second floor of Parkland. You can, we want to show everyone the usage of it, just to let everyone know that, how often it's being used. Numbers keep going up for use. I think that's awesome. Means more and more people are trying to get there and know about it, and that's great. You can see the number of accesses there is climbing to, you know, 1,600 looks like for May. But the other thing that that represents actually that we don't have on here is like 400 docs. So that's really great. We have a medical staff of almost 3,000, so 400 docs, you're talking about, you know, 15% almost. So I think that's really great. But obviously, hey, more people use it, the better. That's what it's there for. There's a little graph here by what days of the week. Looks like it's pretty evenly spread, which we're not surprised by. And then on the weekends, it's used at least, obviously, at least the amount of people here. It's usually used during the day and not at night, which again, we would expect. So anyway, just wanted to let everyone know that it's there and also it's being used more and more every month, which is what we'd like to see. So let's get more and more people in there. It's actually great. It has workstations in a separate area behind the door. If you would like to go there and work, you can certainly do that. It's a quiet space. But it also has a lot of recliners, couches, has a massage chair there. If anyone's in the, you know, massage chairs, you sit there and get a free massage. There are snacks there and there's coffee there. So please go ahead and get in there and use it and relax and find a place of peace in the hustle and bustle of the hospital. Okay, Dr. Costa said, "Where is it located?" It is 02-651. Okay, so 02 obviously means second floor. 651 is down the hall on the second floor toward RJA. So toward the clinic building, okay? And you'll see it. It's on the right. It used to be just a conference room where we used to do a lot of stuff, but we've converted it into the Physician Lounge. So go check it out. It's awesome. All right. Also want to let everybody know that we have a, in collaboration with UTSW, actually. So it's not just for Parkland. It's also all of the UTSW folks in campus. I invited a speaker to come speak about wellness. Just, it's open to everybody. But you see the links and stuff there. You can see location and things like that. So I won't read this slide to you, but the campus is collaborating to bring this individual here and really talk about what does that culture of wellness looks like. So that's coming up. Please feel free to avail yourself of that. Okay, next. Okay, and this is a reminder of a lunch and learn. Our next one is going to be about lifestyle medicine and food as medicine. You can see the speakers there. Won't read that to you. But you know, those of you who have come, because usually we have about a couple hundred or so attend for each session. They're all really awesome. The people that are asked to come speak about this are super passionate about what they're talking about. So it's always great to hear them talk about it. And I'll tell you, and this is, I'll share something personally about me. Like, not every subject has really excited me just looking at it. I'm like, well, that doesn't sound like something I'm super interested in. But I'll tell you that each one of these that I go to, I do get something out of it. Like even if it's something I didn't think I would. I'll tell you, like, I'll give you a really good example. Like, I have never thought about, you know, besides operationally, what being a deaf patient meant. What does being a deaf individual really mean? What is, how's all that work in the healthcare system? We had a speaker come in who's one of our Health Equity Fellows, Dr. Miras, whose entire family is deaf. He somehow was not genetically. So I'm sure how that happened, but he is the one hearing individual in his family. And so, of course, he grew up in that entire culture. And he, I'll tell you, really, those of us who are there listening to him speak about it, we were so touched, moved, dumbfounded by our ignorance and how little we knew about it. But again, as an example of, even if you don't particularly have a personal interest in what's being talked about, try to make time for it. Grab a lunch, eat while you're watching and listening. I bet you'll find a lot of topics that, like I said, initially, you're not that excited about, but you really walk away with something really important. So anyway, so there you go. That's my plug for our Lunch and Learns. Next. Okay, so we've reached the super fun time of question and answer. So if anyone has questions, please put them in the chat and Kim will let me know uh what they are and hopefully one of us uh can answer your question. Uh, there is a one chat in there. Maggie Palmer says that the medical staff and professional services staff will be in the physician lounge on six fifteen from seven AM to one PM to distribute more bento boxes. I don't know if you guys have seen those yet. Some of you have picked those up. Uh, they're basically your traditional sort of uh Japanese bento boxes um that you use for lunch. So we are giving those out to all employees um and staff physicians who are not employees um for celebrate us week. So that was a couple of weeks ago, but we still have those to hand out. So if you have not gotten yours, come on by the lounge on on June fifteenth and grab yours. Any other questions? Any comments? Feel free to put in the chat how great the MC was this time. I don't see anyone has done that, but that would be awesome. Ha ha, great. All right, I have one person. I got one, I fished for compliment. I got one person, so that's good. All right, guys. Well, if there are no questions uh or comments, then we will close today and give you the rest of your evening back. Um, thanks for listening. And as always, if you need anything, uh please reach out uh to me or Roberto. All right. Thanks, everybody.